Foundation started it and give credit to the Economic Development Foundation because if they hadn't funded that environmental study, you'd been nowhere. So be sure and give them credit.
You ready?
Ready? Nope, I guess not. Good to go. You ready, Ron?
Yep.
All right. I'll go ahead and call the commissioners meeting to order for Tuesday, April the 27th. Morning, everybody. I've got Juan Ramirez from Our Lady of Hope here to give prayers this morning. Juan, morning.
Good morning. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in mindful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that may affect our community, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of our community. We assist things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
See you at the Y.
All right. We've got the meeting minutes from April 13th. Meeting, you guys had a chance that was over?
Yeah.
Any corrections?
I'm not, I did not see any corrections.
No.
Anything, Ron?
Looked good to me.
Look for a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Had a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning, guys. Got 900 East's update this morning. Things are going along good. Real Water and RMC, their contractor, Product Comm, are still on site, moving utilities between 100 North and 200 North. Things are progressing forward fairly well. Also, Milestone should be on site anytime, beginning to clean up the trees that we had cut down back in the winter, removing the stumps from those. They're in process of getting our construction inspection team in their office. I believe they've got a site selected for that. So that's moving forward as well. I do have, oh, doing the groundbreaking on the 11th of May.
Right.
Right after the commissioners meeting. So if you guys have anybody you want to invite to that, please let Judy or I know and we'll get them an email.
That's down at Canterbury Church parking lot, right?
Yep. I have one claim voucher this morning for Davis County Real Water. Gross amount of the claim is nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and forty-one cents, with fifteen thousand nine oh four thirty-three being reimbursable. And I present that to commissioners for a single signature, and this is for the water line, first bill on the water line relocation.
We had no highway meetings this morning, right?
Yeah, right. Yep, we missed.
And we got one LPA claim voucher for 900 East water line relocation, in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and eighty percent reimbursable and fifteen thousand nine oh four thirty-three. Looking for a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Had a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, Phil.
Okay, and next up is the ADA plan update. Got an agreement here from Lockmuir Group to allow Judy to do that for us. It's a not-to-exceed amount of ten thousand dollars. We don't think it'll approach that, but we did want to make sure we had enough in there. So if it got more complicated, what we stated that she wouldn't have to stop. So got an hourly rate in there for the client manager at ten dollars an hour, graphic designer, actually at seventy dollars an hour, graphic designer at ninety, and administrative assistant at seventy. And this will be paid from the commissioner's budget. We budgeted money into the ADA to update the plan at budget time last June for you guys. I think there's only five thousand in there, so if it does go over that amount, we'll have to transfer some money from someplace to make up the difference.
You guys have any questions on the ADA?
This is something that's required.
So, yes, it's one of those unfunded mandates. In order to be eligible for federal funding, doesn't matter if it's highway funding or funding that the sheriff's getting or Scott's getting from someplace. We have to have an ADA transition plan. We did ours back in 2013 originally, and it's not been updated since then. So we need to go through and make all the updates in the plan of the improvements that have been made to the courthouse. Obviously, this building's not on there, so it needs to be added. Things we improved at the Highway Department, it all needs to be brought up to speed.
Is that something that should be done every five years?
It is. It is.
So we're a little bit lax.
We are.
We're behind.
Same thing, you know, we've not talked about it, but our Title VI plan as well, be going back through and brought up to speed as well.
Anything, Nathan, on that?
No.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve the ADA update plan, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. That'll be on the commissioner's budget, ADA account, forty-three thousand.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The final thing there, the CSX offer acceptance. We do have an offer from CSX, County, hundred thousand dollars to take over responsibility for the Montgomery Bridge, be paid in two increments, a hundred thousand each, at the time construction begins, and then when it finishes, the second hundred thousand comes back to us. We wrote a letter to accept the offer, but in that we included a proposed bridge design, trying to get CSX to agree to shorten the span since the rail spur at Montgomery had recently been removed. Doesn't look like they're going to be agreeable with that. So I guess at this point, just ask you to table that, come back at the next meeting hopefully, and have things ironed out with them. We did receive response back quickly from them, which I was excited about. Grant sent the email out last Friday, and Monday morning, first thing, we had a response back from their consulting engineer.
That was pretty quick.
Real quick. We'll probably want to go that route again, Grant, if you, like Dwayne and Mark Really, and Lockmuir are working on conceptual design that we think they'll partner with us on, get that move forward.
Sure. Any more questions, Phil, on the CSX update? Looking for a motion?
Still shooting for March, next year, start dates.
Yes.
Okay.
This, so this is delaying. I mean, but all these steps, it just keeps pushing us. I think we can still do it, but...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I guess that's why I make sure we know when that drop-dead date is, so that we can get that bridge replaced. So at some point, we may as have to take good enough and move on.
Yeah.
All right. I'll look for a motion to table the CSX offer exceptions letter.
Still moved.
Had a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Phil?
You guys got anything for me?
Your sugar high come down from last night's safety meeting?
So let's talk about safety for just a minute.
All the good stuff, all the sweets out, because these guys will want to take my spot if you tell them how good it was.
In order to celebrate National Work Zone Awareness Month, or Week, National Work Zone, National Work Zone Safety Awareness Week, Nathan and I had a meeting last night with the Amish Safety Committee.
And Gary.
Oh, and Gary. Yeah, Gary was there. We got treated to some goodies after the meeting was over with, some sugar goodies.
I kept dropping hints during the meeting. Their way of keeping us there.
But overall, everything went well. We are going to need to post another notice in the courier, the Amish paper, to remind people that buggy plates are due here on the 10th and next month, along with property taxes. Get that in there. Overall, good meeting, discussed a recent accident, possible cause of that, and also buggy plate fees were discussed, where the money's been spent.
Yeah, I think this past year, we passed six, twenty-six hundred. I think twenty-six oh nine was the number of buggy permits when we started back in 15. When we, not started, but started actively meeting with them regarding those, we were at like eighteen hundred. So definitely moving in the right direction.
Right.
And we even talked to them about the possibility of, you know, there's this theory that people may be taking buggy plates from one buggy to the other. It was throughout the idea of, you know, like a boat sticker concept.
Right.
And would there be any detrimental impacts of that that we would, that we're not thinking of? And throwing anything out, I told them it's nothing we're really discussing at this point, but at some point down the road, that would be an avenue we could review.
Right.
So, yeah, it was a good meeting. A good meeting.
And like I say, this is National Work Zone Safety Awareness Week, so just to plug out there for the people behind the orange barrels and behind the orange signs, wearing the orange and yellow safety equipment.
Here, yeah.
They all have families and they want to go home. You know, can't imagine bringing a tractor trailer through here running sixty miles an hour right in front of your desk right now. But that's what they experience every day. So we ask people to watch out for that state flower, those orange barrels, cones, and remember that there are real people behind those, and be respectful of that, so.
There's too many tragic accidents every year happen, where people not slowing down in those work areas, so.
Distracted driving is always a problem. Here can attest to that. But being distracted, whether it's with your cellphone, or which, we have the hands-free law now, with your cellphone, or if you're eating your hamburger going down the road, it's distracting, distractions that cause people to get ran over, cause people to rear end. If you guys get to follow the NDOT on Twitter, that they're continually getting those truck-mounted attenuators ran into, people coming up behind and don't see the construction zone and crash into the back of those trucks. So it's a big deal.
All right.
That's all I got.
Appreciate it, Phil. That was pretty quick.
Thank you.
All right, we've got Central Dispatch update, and I'll turn that over to you, Nathan. You've been working on that.
Yeah, just a real quick update. Councilman Sprinkle, Dungeon, and Meredith, Sheriff, Deputy Sheriff Scott Myers, and some dispatch, Jen, and the other lady. We've met, various forms of that group have met probably four times, three to five times in the past few weeks. We've met with the mayor, met with Councilman Brown, and just, we're committed to get this project moving forward this year. We threw out a different idea to them, more, really more of a streamlined idea as far as the overall concept to be basically the county dispatch, just in essence absorbing the city dispatch. And we dispatch for the city just like we do for Montgomery, Kenneburg, Oden, you know, everyone else. And then we would do their electric, and they would pay us a stipend, just for the electric on call. So it's a little bit of a shift in the overall mindset, so we wanted to throw that out to the city just to see what they thought. So they're thinking about that now, and they'll get back to us. I asked them to get back to me by May 15th, just so we can keep this process moving. The other option's still on the table, too, where we just simply merge the two and have a governing body, and we just do an ongoing cost split based off population or call volume. We've got all the data. So that was the original mindset, but we're just trying to think of this thing twenty, thirty, fifty years down the road. And it sounds petty, sounds little, but just appointing people to these boards, and these folks have to show up and then govern these different departments, and you've got different, you know, city and the county, and then one, the left hand or the right hand. And we just wanted to throw out another option that's a little bit more streamlined. I mean, and I think one of the phrases used was if it was eighteen sixteen and we're setting this county up, you know, we wouldn't have two separate sides of the dispatch. We would just simply provide it for the entire county.
Right.
So that's what we've got. So we gave them all the information. They're going to check in with some of the councilmen, see what they feel, and then I'm sure they'll have some questions. So we want to have an answer before the budget starts, whether it's going to be more of the absorbed philosophy, or if it's going to be the joint philosophy. I think the county's generally agreeable to both, both. But we're just waiting. We're going to wait for them to see what they feel.
All right. Sounds good.
So.
The only thing, if we do absorb those employees and stuff, that's just part of our budget, right? But I think we, we got in our local agreement with our, for our building commissioners and for our animal shelter stuff, maybe we've worked some of that in there with that.
Yeah, so on that note, what would happen is basically, yeah, we've got, we've got the numbers, and again, depending on which direction the city goes, we're either going to do a ten-year phase down, if we streamline it, or there would just be an ongoing cost share of sixty, forty, seventy, thirty. And we'll use part of the E-911 funds, up to two hundred and fifty thousand out of the three fifty, so we'd leave a reserve in there. And then, and then the city would do basically an incremental buydown on the streamlined version. So at the end of the day, it is going to be a greater cost to the county by taking over the dispatch.
In time, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say, let's call it a few hundred thousand dollars a year. And the overall benefit is we get, as far as an operational standpoint, if you're in the city of Washington right now and you call 911 on your cellphone and you need city police, a cellphone call within the city goes to the county. I guess all cellphone calls probably go to the county. And then the county answers it, and then they dispatch you to the city.
So it's just more time.
Which, time, and time is money, and, or time is not money, time is lives, time is safety. And then we, instead of having nine dispatchers, right now, there's nine, and we'll, right now, we're at thirty thousand feet. We'll consolidate all this information on paper before we ask for an official decision. But we have nine dispatchers on the county, seven on the city, so that's sixteen. The goal would be that we'd run it with fourteen at some point in time. So instead of us having nine dispatchers at our disposal, we would have fourteen. So we'd have more people, so there'd be less chance of overflow to other, you know, if we're busy, it overflows to another county or another entity. So I think the product's going to be better. It's going to be much more responsive. I think there have been instances in the past year that had we had this model in place, the outcomes could have been different. So we want to be very cognizant of the money, but the safety is obviously is the prevailing.
Right.
Factor. So I'm trying not to rush the decision, but at some point in time, you know how it is, when you ask someone to make up their mind, and you don't give them a deadline, sometimes it's...
Drags on and on them.
I mean, are they thinking about it for four straight days, or are they just getting to it on Saturday? You know what I mean? And we're all human. So try not to rush the process, but at the same time, I think six years is, six years is probably enough time to stew over it. So, so anyway, I don't know if there's any questions. I know you...
I think it sounds good. And I said, just, we do, just moving forward, we'll just try to get through everything, but that sounds good. And thanks for keeping up with everything and get that ball rolling again, try to get something done here.
I had to ask about six questions, and those will all be taken under consideration.
Yeah, so absolutely. So on those six questions, I mean, I think, right now, the mayor, the mayor's certainly on board with consolidation. The new, the new streamlined idea was a new idea as of last Monday. Tony and I met with the mayor. We had just thought of that idea the previous Thursday or Tuesday, so then we met with the mayor immediately just to say, hey, here's a new idea. It was almost one of those too-good-to-be true ideas, because their costs decreased significantly, but we also removed that board, and that was probably causing some anxiety, because they would have two or three representatives on that governing board. And that probably created some anxiety on, you know, we, now we don't...
Yeah, we don't, you said you'd get the answer to those, and again, I just want everybody to remember, although it may increase the cost for the county.
Yeah.
You want to look at the overall cost, because the city residents pay county taxes as well.
Hundred percent, so.
So it could be a benefit to the county.
Yep.
Even if it does cost the county a little bit more than the city residents as well.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So, yeah, right now, the mayor and the sheriff's been involved in all the meetings. We got the cost for the system. We'll do some phase out of the job. Starting off, everyone who wants to work there can, and then just through attrition, Phil, phases out. A taxpayer will benefit, and they need 911 funding. We didn't want to deplete it, but we thought...
Who controls that funding?
The council. Well, technically, it's the commissioners, because we control public safety. But, so the council and the commissioners are the two bodies. So we did appoint this intermediary board a couple of years ago, just to funnel some of the requests through. And then, right now, it goes from that board directly to the council. But theoretically, it should go from the board to the commissioners to the council. But, and then, will the system be better operationally? I mean, we'll have one system instead of two, but it'll be the same system we operate off of, and part of the startup cost will be getting, you know, more of the workstations. And they've agreed in concept to fund, you know, half of the operating costs, as long as they get to approve what those are. So, so there'll be a lot more questions that come up, but we should know more by the next commissioners meeting.
Sounds good.
Can be worked out. It sounds very positive.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Nathan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is Davis County Airport Board nomination. We got a nomination here for David Gray to fill the position at the Davis, at the Davis County Airport. Does anybody know his detail on the open position then, what this position is? I don't have any trouble with it, so whatever you guys' wishes are on putting David Gray on the airport board.
He's on every other...
Does Dave fly?
I was going to say. He's on every other board, and he says, seems as new good, but...
I was going to say, he, he has a good handle on business.
Yeah.
And good decision-making. I don't know if he flies or not, but maybe they need a little variety.
That's what he's talking about. He's got, you know, business experience with the Scoops Ice Creams, worked for IPNL, Washington Township Volunteer, firefighter for thirty-five years, member of the city board's zoning appeals, waits a major for the county.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with it.
No issue with him working for the county and being on that board, is there?
I don't think so.
No, I think Matt Merritt is still on that board, too, so, yeah, it's an independent board of the county.
Yeah, looking for a motion to approve David Gray to the airport.
I think Matt's not on the board.
I think Matt's not on the board anymore.
He's not on the board.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, proposed estimates for the maintenance shop. Scott?
Morning. Going back a few months, we talked about purchasing a new storage shed that would be portable, and suggested by the commissioners at that time to build a permanent structure. So we seek bids, and we got three bids in. What we need now is determine which way to go and go forward, working with the city, building commissioner, council, get our variances that we need, that will determine the size of building that we currently want. We have bids on a fifty-by-fifty structure that would be partial in drowning, that would be tucked in, look good against our new building, same color. We have three bids. The bid that came in was Grabber Post Buildings, a hundred and six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, seventy-two cents. Davis County Metal came in a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And the third estimate we got back was M&amp;J Construction, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. So I'm assuming that take the lowest bid, need a okay, and is there questions?
Yeah, I guess, I guess just a couple of questions. I just got done, maybe a month ago, with a project similar to this. So, and hindsight's 2020, and there's several things that I'm glad I added in hindsight that I was, I almost didn't do because of trying to keep the cost down. So like the insulation on the walls, the blown, or the spray foam versus that fiberglass, which, I mean, is there...
Just came back, stated insulation.
Yeah, they got the two-inch, the pretty stuff, but get whatever you want, but for that spray foam, I mean, it's probably going to be seven to nine thousand dollars, give or take a thousand dollars, just a rough estimate to spray foam those walls instead, and it's there forever. That's one, just thought. And then the floor drains, we put floor drains in, and in hindsight, I'm so glad we put floor drains in.
Yes.
But just, and that was probably another five or six thousand, and we did twenty-four by seventy-two, I think it was an addition. So, anyway, just an FYI there. I know we're trying to keep the cost down as much as we can, but some of these things you just can't add in after the fact.
Yes.
Is that necessary for that type of a garage? I mean, are you...
Yes, we'll be doing all kinds of cleanup and give us an area to do construction. Right now, we have supplies and parts and equipment in probably six or seven different locations. So we, it would be a good opportunity, everything in one building, we can have an open space that we can utilize. And, oh, yeah, that's a good suggestion.
Where are we spending this money out of?
Haven't talked about it yet.
Okay. And we can, I mean, so we do an additional appropriation?
We've had to do additional appropriation for, probably for our cum cap, probably.
So today, I'm just coming to tell you what we found and get the okay to go ahead and work with the city, and see what we can get.
Right now, we don't know. I talked to the city building commissioner. Since that parcel's attached to this parcel, and we're using the same usage, we're able to put that storage building there, because if not, we cannot put the storage building there. They was going to, they thought we could get the storage building down to at least equal with the corner of the annex, or close to it in there, so we can eliminate some of that slope up to the, up to the garage. So that's still all going to get approved by the city, so that's the reason he's got two different building sizes here for the setbacks and stuff, forty, forty by forty or fifty by fifty. But it looks like both, both directions, though. Grabber Post is still under both of them, either, either direction. So I think if we want to move forward with that, you want to, you need to rebid this, we're going to...
I wouldn't rebid it. I mean, because me speaking on myself, I wouldn't rebid it. I mean, I think we can go ahead and select the vendor, but then just know, I mean, they added on, like, to hook up my water line for my boiler, they said that wasn't included. So I'm like, all right, whatever. And then they said to hook my electric up to the main power, that wasn't included. So I'm like, all right.
So it'll be like a little bit nickel and dime here.
And then the wall insulation and the floor drain. So I'm just saying, you can take twenty percent and add to that number, and just, that's the number we probably need to have in back of our heads as far as a budgetary standpoint. And I'm okay with that number. But just more FYI.
I guess we'll look for a motion to approve the low bid on either building forty by forty or fifty by fifty, whatever the city approves. So I guess I'll look for that motion.
And I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart to accept Grabber Post Buildings.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Michael?
Yeah.
Funding source? I didn't catch all of your discussion.
Right now, we don't have a funding source, so we'll probably have to ask for an additional appropriation for cum cap.
From cum cap?
Yeah.
So that process, before you move forward, Scott, will he make sure that appropriation is completed?
I think as soon as, probably ought to wait on that until we get approval from the city. Once he gets that, then we'll figure out what size building we build, and then we can ask for additional appropriation. I mean, hopefully, we get this done by the end of summer, before fall, maybe winter, so you guys, guys... maybe winter. So you guys, you got to place to park your snowmover equipment in there. All right? Sounds good. All right. We got cancellation of property taxes on three oh nine East Heffernan Street, Washington. That would be the house we purchased from Ms. Morrison across the street.
It's a small balance that we received a billing on.
Six dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Dollars and fifty-eight cents.
So does county need to pay that to themselves or?
Well, that's why we did the petition. We did this on the last property that there was tax bill that was remaining since we're tax exempt. It's a process we can use. It really makes no sense to write a check to yourself.
Yeah, so we'll be able to cancel that out. So, all right. Look for a motion to cancel out the property taxes on three oh nine East Heffernan Street.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gavart.
Second.
Second one, all on paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't need to sign anything. All right. Sounds good. All right. Parking across the street. I know parking has been brought up several times. Parking lot, we still are trying to get the houses tore down. And hopefully here within a month, we'll be able to get in all those houses and get the parking lot started. So it's going to be a bit of summertime before we get it done. I just ask that all employees please not park on Heffernan Street or Third Street over here by the church. So the churches got places to park. And then out front of Heffernan Street during business hours for property tax people coming in, the annex. They got a place to park. You guys have anything else on parking?
No, no. At some point, I'm sure the health department will update us on that.
Parking lot.
This parking lot. I'm seeing that's going to open up more pharmacy wide.
Right.
Soon, so we should have.
I think they are slowing down on their clinics, so.
I think their vaccination clinic is down to two days a week now.
Okay. So right now, if we, everybody would just, the employees remain parking where they've always parked. And as soon as we get some availability of parking, we'll open the parking up. There is parking over here for just right north of Gil's, the gravel lot there. People are more willing to park, you know, they can park there very easily. So there is places to park and just not right at the front door, please.
So, Michael, the request is not to park in front of the building on Heffernan Street?
Heffernan Street, yeah.
The rest of Heffernan Street's open.
I think so. I don't want to control. I just want the north side open for, for patrons coming in here. And then just to hear on the west side, just on the annex side, not to park for the church. Respect for the church, give them places to park.
So the whole side here or just in front of the building?
The whole north side.
The whole north side.
They can park on the south side or over here across the street. Yep. Any else on parking, guys?
And again, it's understood that's just a request.
Yeah.
It's actually a city issue.
I know. But I just request, just, I'm talking about employees. And if they can respect that for a little while, we will get the parking lot finished. I know it's been a long time coming, but we've had a few hiccups trying to get those buildings tore down. We've actually had to deal with Idam and, and get abatement of the buildings. It's taken a longer process, but we're down to the point that the abatement team should be here anytime to remove the asbestos. Once we get that done, we should get our permit, be able to tear the houses down, start working on the projects. All right. Nothing else, we'll move on. We got a surplus report from the items sold out of the offices. Patty, you want to speak on that behalf? I know you've worked diligently on that and you've got, had a lot of work to get that done.
We've completed the bidding process. There was quite a bit of activity on it. It's about four thousand dollars that's been taken in on miscellaneous items. And I have, have it in detail if anybody wants to review what items and at what cost. That's all in a packet here. And then, Michael, you and I discussed moving forward on the final plans. There's some interest with nonprofit groups that are wanting some items. I'll just let you address those issues.
Yeah. So Patty's went out for advertisement to get bids on those. And we got a lot of that stuff moved, purchased. So we got some, still got some furniture sitting there. So I would request that we send that out for nonprofits to come pick up wherever they want that's left over. I would ask for a five oh one C three certificate to make sure they're non-for-profit. Do you guys have any feelings on that for rest, rest of that, to finalize and get rid of the rest of that furniture?
Sounds, sounds good.
Okay. So can I get a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the nonprofits.
Okay. Got a motion by Nathan Gavart.
Second.
Second one, all on paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Patty, for everything on that. I know you've done a ton of work.
Uh, Michael, on that, do we still want to leave that May fourteenth date intact as far as?
Yes, so on the non-for-profit, try to have all, we'll advertise and reach out to people, but try to have all that finalized by May the fourteenth, so we can get the houses tore down.
And this is just the items in the houses now?
Across the street. Everything else in the courthouse, you could just sit there, yeah. Just in these four houses across the street. All right. Next item on the agenda, courthouse committee meeting. So May the third, is that what it is?
Yeah.
May the third at four P M. There will be a courthouse committee meeting and it's open to the public. So anybody's, everybody's invited. They'll be right here in the commissioners room. Let everybody know that. You guys have any questions on that? Ron?
No.
All right. I put Byron Sanders on the, on the agenda this morning. Byron's not going to be here and didn't ask him to be here. I, the reason I had, we had had an executive session with Byron earlier on maybe some possible litigation. And I just wanted to get your guys' feedback on if you want to go down that route or, or if we're done, done with what we're doing with the annex. Guys' feedback.
I'd like to see his final report, to see exactly what he comes up with.
Okay. That's fine. Everybody will just move forward with that. As of right now, I think we're still on the same clock with him on what we said, what we have paid.
Yeah, as long as we're not over the initial budget. So if there's someone that, that needs to be held liable, then obviously we need to get, focus in on that and, and then shift gears and move on.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to get some feedback from you guys on that. So it sounds like we'll move forward for a little bit here and then see what happens.
Okay.
All right. We did receive a request from Robin, I can't remember his last name, Patty. What's that? Yeah, Robin, Robin Compton to, for permission to a peaceful protest on the courthouse lawns. And I don't have any, any issue with that. I know we have different protests out there in the past and, and we let different things go on. The only thing I would ask maybe was to either, if we did do it during business hours, that we couldn't disrupt courts, but I would prefer to have them after four o'clock after the business hours are done. Guys' feedback on that.
Does the subject matter, what he's protesting, matter?
It's, it's just a peaceful protest. I mean, I, his subject matter, I don't, Gary, you know a little bit about the case, but I don't have any issue with him going out. And you want to come up and speak for a minute?
Mr. Compton's brother had an incident in Oden. Mr. Compton, the way, I've investigated, our department, state police, attorney general, Dan, he thinks that he's not done a good job on the investigation of his thing. But it's been investigated and investigated and investigated and investigated. There's just nothing there. The prosecutor.
Well, I mean, my, my, my personal view of the topic is irrelevant. If that's as far as what they're protesting about. I mean, everyone has the, the free will to gather on our courthouse property. So I would just suggest that this body really doesn't even need to be participating in this process by validating or invalidating.
Mr. Compton has harassed several people in the Oden area. He's been trespassed from a few businesses, type of things in the Oden area, so.
Will you all, whenever this happens, you all will be present to make sure it's peaceful?
We'll monitor it, right. I think somebody said he may be there.
I, 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 I sent him an email back, said I will put it on the agenda for today's meeting. And I never get a response back from him. But I don't have any issue with him being out there protesting, but I would prefer, I would, as long as it's peaceful, as long as, as long as you guys are aware of what's going on. So we keep an eye on him. But I don't have any issue with him being out there.
I mean, it was kind of him to reach out, but I mean, this body doesn't grant permission to protest or not to protest.
Well, just he's asking for use of the grounds, which we do have, we do have to say so on that.
Well, I think you can assemble peacefully. But I haven't read the constitution lately, but.
I'm just saying.
I, I just don't see any point in validating protest by using this legislative body, but.
If he was wanting to do it inside the courthouse, I'd say.
Oh, a hundred percent. Can't go inside the building, but if they want to stay outside on the property, then it's fair. If we say yes, you have permission. Now we're, we're somehow affiliated with the protest is my own point.
Well, there's also kinds of subject matter that might come out of that. So I'd say I'd let him know we're not going to do anything, but.
They want to gather peacefully. That's their right as American citizens, but we'll be keeping an eye on it, just like we do the, the other, I don't know. We had a protest a year or two ago and we had the SRU unit inside.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
BLM, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was over the Minneapolis.
Yeah.
Derek Chauvin, Floyd.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And there was about seventy-five people there. They were all right.
All right. Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Gary. Any other questions on that or answers?
No, thank you.
We'll move forward then. Sounds good. EMR COVID cost share extension. This came to us, came to Patty last week and we had to make a decision really quick to either hold the extension or, or put the extension on to July the nineteenth or not. I told him since such a short timeframe that we'd go ahead and extend it to July the nineteenth. But after that, I would probably not be interested in extending that COVID for EMR. So that's what it is here today.
I mean, and, and I'm okay with that. But I mean, my personal view is everyone has access to the vaccine if they want it. If they don't want it, that's perfectly fine. But if you get it, to expect the county to pay you extra for getting it when you could have prevented it, it's just like, you need it. Choices and consequences type of thing. But I think it's time to move on and put the dime back on everyone else.
I'm agreeing with that too, so. All right. Anything else from you guys, officials? Anything from the audience? If not, I'd like to see a motion for paying payroll, paying claims and adjournment.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gavart.
Second.
All on paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.